I'm going to call our County Board of Commissioners meeting to order this meeting for December 20, 2017. If we'll all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Commissioner Murdaugh?
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is a public meeting. It's being recorded. I'm not sure. I think we are not streaming it live anymore. We will go through our agenda. If you are here to address the commissioners, there's a point for public input, recognition of visitors. We will do that. If you're not listed, an item that you're here for some specific reason, and it's not on the agenda up here, it will be addressed during the public comment session. So look carefully at the agenda. If you're here for any of the 12, excuse me, 11 items on the agenda, then you won't need to do a public comment. There'll be a period of time for you to do that if you're here for one of those items. Okay, awards and recognitions. We get numerous cards or comments, thank you notes. Most of the time, it's from our youth for 4H. So Commissioner Alfred, would you?
And we do have two more this morning. One from Haley Tomlinson of Hermiston thanking us for support of the FFA and the show at the fair, the livestock sale and so on. What the commissioners typically do is for the youth auctions, livestock auctions, we provide what's called a bump, which means that when the animals are sold, generally the first ones are the, you know, the grand champions and so on, so they get the greatest attention. They get a lot of support and a lot of money. And then as the auction goes on, the amount of the bids decrease. So the bump helps kind of bump it back up and equalize it a little bit for the others. This one is from Taylor Hamby, says, "Thank you for the bump this year to Pendleton Junior Show." And I'm not sure which one this other one was, but it was from a Hermiston, could have been the fair. So it's always nice to receive these back from young people that they do recognize that we're there. So that's all I've got.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Acknowledgement for our minutes and approval. These are minutes for November 1st and November 22nd.
Mr. Chair, move approval of the minutes of November 1st.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. We've received those by email. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
I further move approval of the minutes of the meeting of November 22, 2017.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, I think we have a couple additions or just one?
I think there's one. It's listed as number five on the computer screen.
The reader purchase, okay.
And hopefully will be a pinky before the end of the meeting for that.
Okay. All right.
If not, Dan Laney and I could present on it.
Okay, I know we have some folks here that wanted to address the board on some road issues. So I'm making an assumption here. One is ought, or if not ought, Feedville and Edwards. Another one would be, I think McKinney Road. I had some calls on that. So those folks that wanted to address the board concerning McKinney Road, if you would come up to the front. When you do address the board, please identify yourself and your address and what your proposal or your subject is. Yeah, come on up. Step up to the mic and...
I'm not sure.
I may come out and ask for the meeting.
Okay.
So I don't know the whole issue.
Okay. My name's Chris Thomas. I live 280 East McKinney Avenue. And so the issue we have, it is a stretch of road that may be 200, 300 yards long. It connects Fourth Street with First Street in Hermiston. This past winter did tremendous damage to the road. And so our concern is, talked to the county, the roadmaster said it was a privately owned road with public access. We weren't sure what that meant, so my neighbor and I came over last week, Scott Purswell. And we spoke to the title company. We were directed to go to the title company after we spoke to the maps and planning department down here. They couldn't answer our question. The title company said it is owned by the county, but he basically said, "There's three kinds of roads. There's paved, gravel, and what he called primitive." And under the primitive road, he said, "The county is not directly responsible for maintaining the road." So we're wondering, so we went and spoke to Tom Fellows, who is the roadmaster. He said by Oregon statute and by Oregon law, he's not authorized to direct funds to McKinney Avenue unless it's an emergency. I don't know what constitutes an emergency. Certainly the road's drivable, but it's terrable. The road is, you know, a number of us live, a handful of people here today live on McKinney Avenue, but we probably honestly use a road 1% to 2% of the total traffic of McKinney. It's a heavily used road by the county. City individuals use it, county road, our county personnel use it, and mostly just lots of residents. It's a heavily trafficked road to and from the railroad. It's kind of a shortcut. If you live in the east side of Hermiston, you kind of go up behind Safeway, and it's a shortcut to First that takes you out to Feedville. Maybe some of you know the road. After talking to Tom, he said that the landowners on McKinney are the ones responsible for maintaining the road. This was news to us because over years and years, being told from prior residents, the road was always maintained by Yountella County. It was, potholes were fixed, it was chip sealed, and all this stuff. And so we're kind of at this situation now where we want to do what's fair, and if us landowners used the road exclusively, for the most part, for our own personal use, we would fix it. But it's not necessarily the case. It is used by the public majority of the time, like I said, probably 98 to 99% of the time. So after talking with Tom Fellows, the roadmaster, we mentioned coming here, and he said that'd be a good idea to maybe get the road changed to a different status, such as a paved road. If that status was changed, and I don't know the process, how that legally is done, but then he could direct funds to fix the road.
Okay, other comments? Come on up. I'm going to ask you, Doug, to address the comment on legality of it here in a minute.
My name is Debbie Brandt, and I have lived and been a property owner up there on McKinney for 29 years this month. We've lived in two different houses on that road, and now we just own property. We no longer live there. But in that 29 years, as Chris said, we have always noticed that the county did do the maintenance up there, chip sealing and what have you. I would assume that that, some kind of legal precedence, if you guys have always done this, which I would think 29 years would be a minimum, that would be acceptable in that. But also, in the time period that we have owned, my husband and I have owned property up there, there was a period of time that we did some replating with the land that we owned up there, and I was unable to find the letters of communication that we had received in that. But I do have a letter, well, I'll start with the plat, the surveyor's plat plan here, and there's a notation on this, and it is replat of partition plat number 1998-15. And there's a notation on here that says, "Note, an additional five feet of right-of-way was dedicated on southeast Fourth Street and east McKinney Avenue by dedication and acceptance on partition plat 1998-15." Well, what this meant was that we, as property owners, had to give five feet of our land to the county. So it became theirs. Well...
Actually, you didn't give it to the county. You gave it for public use.
Well, the county took it from us somehow, and it is for public use. In order to be able to do this, we had to give our land away. That's a land grab, which seems not quite fair, you know, in finding out, you know, what is it, almost 20 years later, well, 15 years later, that it wasn't the county that took it. I mean, it was, it's not clear in any of the paperwork that we were able to put our hands on who took it, but we had to give up the five feet in order to replat. Anyway, then on a letter from the city of Hermiston regarding this same thing, and it's dated August 3, 2010, they're agreeing to all of this, but there is a notation on, they're agreeing to the replating of our land, but it says, "Applicants shall obtain all necessary access permits from the county road department for new access onto county roads." It says county roads there, which we assumed was McKinney. Anyway, this is, you know, something that we've been very distressed to see, that road, where we are talking, some of the nicest homes in the Hermiston area are built on that street, and everybody wants the road taken care of. It affects our property values, and it's really a shame that it's been let go to this point, and we would just...
What you would like is for the county to pay and do something with it, is your request?
Yes. And I mean, even if it came down to property owners giving you a quick claim deed to five feet of our property, the frontage of our property, if necessary, something, so that the county could take it over and it could be maintained. I have personally watched the railroad's van that transports their employees from the Oak Tree Motel or whatever down by Safeway pass our house up there every 20 minutes for hours and hours. They go by every 20 minutes. So, I mean, that's a lot of wear and tear on the property, that alone. And they're only a minor part of it, because anybody that lives out Buttercrick or whatever, and they're going to Safeway, they're going to be driving by on McKinney as well. And we would respectfully ask that you help us somehow in getting this straightened out so we can have a decent road again.
Doug, would you address the legality? I know that was one of the questions.
Well, McKinney Avenue is what's termed a public access road, or local access road either. It's not a county road. The distinction is, a county road has been a road that's been accepted by the county, and the county maintains it. A local access road is a road that the public has a right to use, but it's maintained by the property owners and the users of it, of that road. In this particular case, the eastern portion of McKinney Avenue has been clearly declared a public road. The west portion has not. I'm not sure if there's, I could not find anything on that. I don't know if the road department may have something on that or not. But at the present case, if it's a local access road or a public road that the public has a right to use, then it is up to the owners, or the property owners, or the users of it, to maintain it. Until it is brought into the county system as a county road, then the county cannot legally maintain it. What the statute that Tom Fellows was referring to limits by state statute that the county cannot maintain a local access road unless the Board of Commissioners approves it for an emergency situation.
And then she mentioned the taking of the land...
Right.
And Carol's here, but I won't ask you. Doug, could you explain?
Yes.
Why that requirement was in there? It's not by, so much by county, but by land use standards.
Right. When you replatted that, one of the criteria for the planning department, and I don't know if this is processed by the city or the county, but in that case, one of the requirements is to make sure that there's adequate access to the property. So that time, they requested that you grant additional five feet of your property to both roads as part of that land use approval process. And it was just for public use. It was not really granted to the city or to the county.
So what I will do, as chair and liaison to the road department, I will check with Tom and with planning and find out more information and see if we can't figure out some way. It may end up, you folks, having to form an LID, a LID, which is Local Improvement District, which means every landowner on that road, depending on what their frontage is, and I don't know if Tom Fellows explained that to you, depending on the footage amount of their frontage, pays a certain amount for that frontage on the road. If somebody owned 100 feet and someone else owned 300 feet, they would pay three times the amount that the 100-foot person owned. And then the cost of improving that road, or what it costs to bring it up to what those folks wanted on that road as a standard, everyone would help pay for that.
I'm not sure what the process is to bring a road into the county system, but I think there is an opportunity out there. I've driven the road several times. I'm familiar with it. The potholes are deep. The other option would be perhaps to contract with our county roads department to take care of some of the urgent needs, like the potholes. I think that possibility exists, but that'd be need to be taken up with Tom.
But I will check with him on that and see what we could do, what we can do legally and what we have funding to do.
Thank you very much.
Understand the problem.
Thank you.
When you do that, I understand that none of those public roads are like local access, where they serve a group of property owners. Do we have other roads like this where they apparently aren't local access, they're throughways? This is a throughway, right?
Well, there's only certain categories under the statute, and basically, a public road that's not maintained by the county is a local access road. So even though it may be generally used by the...
But it's a throughway.
By the public. By the public, it's still considered a local access road.
Different than serving, like a dead end that serves a group of houses.
Right. But it just, that's the way they categorize it. There isn't one for that.
I understand that.
Okay.
I'm Scott Purswell. I live at 310 East McKinney. I don't have much to add except for, you know, I understand a local access road, if it was just a road to get up to our driveways. What I'd like to impress upon you is this is the shortcut. When the high school's getting started and getting out, people use our road. When the railroad shift starts at 7:00, 3:00, and 11:00 at night, half an hour before, 30 cars going to work, half an hour later, 30 cars going home. The Oak Tree Inn is 24 hours a day with three shuttle buses, and, you know, Chris mentioned we're 2% or whatever it is. Whatever the road was designed originally as local access, that's not what the road is now. And, you know, we've talked about, look, we just want the road fixed, and if we have to pay, you know, understandable, we use it. We have nine people, nine property owners, on this stretch of road, and Chris and I, for what it's worth, my property is, my frontage is teeny tiny. But we said, "If we divide it by nine parts, depending on the level of repair we do, based on the different estimates we've gotten, my portion of the repairs would be over a third of my house's value." That's a big bite to take. And so that's why I say, you know, whatever it used to be, it's not that now. And so we're asking help. You guys said we could transition to something else with your help. I think that's really what we're after. I don't think anyone's saying, "Hey, you guys just have to pay for it all." That's not it. But we are asking for help to find something a little more fair and reasonable. So that's it. Thank you.
Not to change what we would be doing or what I'm going to check on. People want their roads improved, and probably all of you know this anyway, but the minute, if the county did that, and I'm not saying we will, but if we did that, the minute that road would be improved and paved, that won't reduce your traffic on that road. It will increase the traffic, and it will speed up the traffic. And the next comment we'll probably hear is, "We have got to have some type of restrictions because people are driving by our house 60 and 70 miles an hour." So, and that's one of the things you run into. That's not a reason to not check to see if something can be done, but think about those things when you think about working on roads. But I'll check to see, as liaison to our road department and chair, what we can do at improving or getting some relief.
Next, Steve. My understanding from the LID is the landowners, like you said, would be responsible ultimately for the cost of that road, and we understand how that process works, and I spoke to an attorney as well, as well as Tom Fellows. I guess that the issue that most landowners have on McKinney is, we use it 1% to 2% of the time of the road. Why are we responsible for 100% of the cost? So that would be the issue with the LID.
Okay.
When would we be responding to the landowners?
I will check sometime either today or tomorrow with Tom and see if we can't get more information, and then try to get back to you folks or someone. I know some of you have called me about it. You've talked to our secretary. And see if we can't come up with some resolution or at least information for you sometime next week. It'll be after Christmas, however.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
She wanted to speak, I think, here.
Okay.
Do you want to speak?
I just, Mr. Thomas or Thompson?
You're going by yourself?
Yes. Well, I'm on McKinney also. I'm right at the corner of First and McKinney.
Okay, your name and address.
My name is June Tassie, and I live at 101 East McKinney Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Thompson said what I wanted to say about why should the homeowners pay 100% of the cost when they only use it about 2% of the time, and the other 98% is wear and tear? And it's not just the vans. There's county trucks and school buses and things that go by when the road is in good repair. And it's not an improvement. It's always been paved as long as I've lived there, and so it wouldn't be an improvement to pave it because it never was a gravel road. And so that's just maintenance, which has always been done by the county until recently.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We have one other road issue, I think, Ron Lynn. Is Ron here?
I'll start with something my mother told me. She said, "My name is Ron Lynn, and if she ever lied to me, it was never to hurt me." So I'm Ron Lynn, 36030 Despain Gulch Road. For 45 years, we've been through that intersection of Despain and Edwards, and it is truly a dangerous intersection. I was chairman of a little local school board. I handed a young lady her diploma. Next time I saw her, she was laying under a space blanket at that intersection. So we recognize that's a dangerous intersection. I've been a lifetime supporter of agriculture here in northeast Oregon. People did not come to the Hermiston area to buy a Ford from Roarman. They came here because of center pivot and our water and our agricultural community. And that's just where I am. You guys wanted to quick draw contrast. We never imagined that you would get your stop signs in as quick as you did, and we're not applauding that, but we think there's a better use for that road. The problem is, people on the north-south run the stop sign.
Mr. Lynn?
Sir?
To maybe correct you, you're not talking about Despain Gulch Road and...
I'm sorry. Yeah, it becomes Despain Gulch further on. I'm talking Feedville and Edwards.
Yes.
Thank you. I stand corrected. Feedville and Edwards. Now, there's, there's been dirt work done to clean the intersection up. When the fields to the west of that were in wheel lines, they blew horribly. And it built a berm in that southeast quadrant, and that berm in place is can be five feet high, and it will hide a lot of vehicles approaching from the south. Now, weeds on top of the berm, and you've got quite a visual barrier. The weeds and the dirt have never covered the stop sign, so we've got to recognize that. People are running that stop sign, and that's where the problem develops. Now, we've got the red flashing lights there, but we think we can do better. We would support continuing conversation about that intersection. Our thought is that the lawful people running east and west are now put the burden on them from the unlawful people that are running the stop sign. I can't imagine, I have difficulty imagining how we're going to ever remove a stop sign once we put it in, unless we have a continuing conversation about the best way to handle that intersection. So that's why we're here, and I'm here with a couple fellows from the Stall Ranch who use that road extensively in their farm operation, and Herb will speak to that. So what I, the message that we want to put to the commission is that a great opportunity is here to improve that intersection. We're not sure that the four-way stop is necessarily it regarding the function of that highway to agriculture. There's no, there's nobody that you would rather see in a 60,000-pound loaded semi than the Stall Ranch. They're absolutely responsible people. But we're asking about a conversation to see that we've done the right thing for that intersection and for public safety. I think, we think there's other options. So that's what we're here to talk about. Herb, would you like to address this for your point of view?
Herb Stall, Stall Farms.
Herb Stall, Stall Farms, three-six-three-four-five, Despain Gulch Road. And just to expound on what Ron's talked about, our hope was always that that thoroughfare, the the Spain Gulch turning into Feidville would be something that would be, the road being improved, instead of what having put a stop sign in there now, having it regressed, going the opposite way, where you'd build a bigger, wider, and maybe a higher road because just off of our farm, there's approximately, I would say, three thousand, thirty-five-hundred loads of of produce, semi-loads of produce off of my farm, our farm there. You take the neighboring farms, that multiplies by, I don't know how much, you'd have to sit down and do the math. So I guess we're a little late to the game. We should have addressed this a little earlier. Our hope was, and we had also sat down with other private, like, say, private companies, the trucking companies or other Lamb Weston or Simplot, wherever hauling potatoes out of there, the Modelas, right? Is that who you talked to, Mark? We were willing to fund, privately fund, a light it up, stop ahead sign and a light it up, stop sign, privately funded for a trial basis, north and south. But I guess this jumped on us too quickly, and we might be a little late for that. But long term, for that thoroughfare is, our hope is, the road being improved because it's narrow and it is a little dangerous if you're rolling down that road with a big semi. And and it's not just us. There's so much wheat that comes down that canyon canyon by our farm. I'm betting it's in the excess of ten thousand loads every every summer, going back and forth. And it's a lot of energy stopping a truck and and starting it again. We realized the safety thing, and we wish we could have gotten in a little earlier and maybe had a trial period for a stop ahead, light it up, stop ahead sign, or maybe even rumble strips on the road because we believe it is, it's the same people. I was coming home from Hermiston the other day, and I saw the sheriff is in front of me, pulled off a couple hundred yards back. I pulled in behind him, and it was Josh Roberts. So visited with him. He says, he's of the same mind, that it's the same people doing it at the same time nearly every day. Of course, you have the occasional unfortunate stuff that happened, like some young gal recently that stopped, was on her phone, and then looked up and without looking, she passed in. That's an accident. The main thing is going forward, I guess, just we don't want that being a stop and go and a stop and go. And the ag is going to grow out there with some of the projects that are being being introduced and possibly done. That will multiply that by ten, twenty times of the vehicles, the big vehicles going down that road. So some of the water and some of the the projects that are being proposed. So that's my point. Mark, did you want to talk about the number of stuff? Mark's our mechanic truck guy, and so...
Mark Stall, three-six-three-four-five, Despain Gulch Road. Big trucks can't stop on a dime. Far as I've been here, which is about ten years in the area, we have yet to have a accident with a truck on that Despain Feidville Road, if you recall. Most of the time, it's guys thinking, hey, I can beat this guy. So that's what's happening. If you take the next intersection further south, there was also a four-way stop sign being created there. If you go further north, there is another four-way stop sign. Why on that stretch of road? What are them guys trying? They're just trying to beat the next guy. And like Herb said previous, the lawful are having to be accountable now for the unlawful. Like Herb said, three thousand loads off of our farm, GS each. Brockers, Ever Northwest moved into town now. We need not just a big maintenance, maintained road there. There's places there when used, you know, we was driving behind a truck the other day. If two trucks passes, they have to clip the yellow line in order for not to hit the ditch. That's how narrow this road is becoming. With being a local farm community, we need a good access road for trucks that haul sixty thousand pounds, which makes their gross weight ninety to a hundred thousand pound vehicles. So you have a a narrow road and a small road. Those aren't light vehicles. So we need, we've, you know, we don't want to kill people with big trucks either. So that's why we are very safety minded. And that stop sign there, it's, that's another brake, more fuel, more brakes, everything. And we are aware of what's going on there. I think that the red light that was ten years too late that you put there, north and south, but the east and west guys, I guess, are going to have to. I slow down there. I always do. But the east and west guys, they all have to be more careful now. It's going to give them guys going north and south another leeway now. Now they have to stop for sure. Now we can run it even better. That's what I'm seeing. Another thing I'd also like to bring up here shortly, three-ninety-five and Feidville. You guys realize that's a bad one, too. In order for a loaded truck to cross that interstate there, four lanes and a turning lane. Those people coming from the south, north, going north on three-ninety-five. I would like to have a mic in a lot of people's cars, what they are saying when they come up to a truck that's trying to cross there and they have to hit the brakes. We can't see them, they can't see us. I don't know what the state tried when they built that intersection.
Sadly, we don't have much say over what the state...
I understand, but...
So those are some, we can tell the state, share your concerns, but you folks need to contact the state also on some of those. But I I do hear what you're saying. I've I've driven truck, too. And it does cost if you have that many loads and stopping the the fuel. Those signs were put up and not to be disparaging toward young drivers or drivers that are not cautious or irresponsible. Some are. They just, and they just somehow don't learn until something bad happens.
I understand, yeah.
I see it a lot, not just there, but all over.
Yeah. That's why we're here. We're not just about the stop signs there. We'd like to get that whole road built up, widened, and it's, that whole road needs serious attention. And like we're here, we're, our fuel tax is going to go up in January. It's fine. But we'd like to see something back. Would appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay. Mark, thank you.
One more little comment. Ron talked about having, getting a stop sign removed is pretty tough, but I think a path to doing that is, if you did build a nice road, wider, higher, and people know you're building, our hope is in the future that that be in a wider, well-built thoroughfare, kind of with everything that's going through there. And then it can be readdressed at that time. So because at this point with big vehicles, it's a dangerous road, so.
Okay. Thanks for coming. Herb and Mark, Ron, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. Okay. Other comments on that? All right, let's move on with our our regular business, the Pine Creek Road vacation. This has been a meeting for roads today. So Doug?
Okay. This is a time scheduled for a public hearing on the petition that was filed by some property owners to vacate a portion of Pine Creek Road.
Okay. With that, I am going to open this hearing on the vacation, the proposed vacation of Pine Creek Road. And I'm ready for a staff report.
Good morning. Matt Kenny, Umatilla County Public Works Department. I was hoping if, I'm going to kind of ask you to work with me a little bit. We've got a few different slides to go through. So I think to start out, if we could go to page four of my report, I'd appreciate that. No, not, no. So to touch on a brief introduction, we've had a petition to vacate a portion of Pine Creek Road, which is known as County Road six-eighty-eight, submitted by Janet Stevenson to us on July twelfth, twenty-seventeen. The board, at its October fourth meeting, accepted the vacation petition and referred it back to us for report, which is what I'm going to touch on today and kind of give you guys a brief overview of of all the facts and findings that we found throughout the So just in general, to give you an idea where the location of this of this road is, it's kind of east of Weston, Oregon, west of Tolgate, immediately south of two-oh-four, and just north of Bingham Springs. So the portion that's proposed to be vacated begins at the intersection of Pine Creek Road and Narcus Lane, and it continues easterly along Pine Creek Road for about three miles to the terminus of the existing right-ofway. This portion of road is confined within sections one and two, and Township three-north thirty-six, and sections five and six, and Township three-north thirty-seven. So and we'll get the maps pulled up in a little bit, but I'll just continue on at this point. To go over a little bit of the history and the current use of the road, it's actually comprised of three or four different old roads that have, that make up its current as-traveled way. So it's comprised of Roads three-thirty-seven, Roads four-oh-five, and four-thirty-two. Yeah, and these are some photos if, you can go go ahead and scroll through these, too, if you like, to just kind of give you an idea of what the current conditions of the roads, the road is. And these were taken in July of this year. And there are some utilities, which I'll touch on in here a little bit, in the right-ofway. They service this property where that gate is. The road takes a hard left-hand turn here and and kind of heads to the west, and those utilities end there. But from that point on, as you can see, the road gets a little narrower, but it's still very traversable. So back to the history, Road three-thirty-seven was established in eighteen ninety at a width of forty feet. It was, it's to replace an existing unsafe logging road and would be used as a new and improved route for hauling wood and timber from the mountains. Road four-oh-five was established in eighteen ninety-two with no width stated. The right-ofway has been determined to be sixty feet by applying the statutory methods used to determine right-ofway at that time. Petitioners wanted a road from Weston to Dobbs Mill, then on to Warm Springs, also known as Bingham Springs on the Umatilla River. The route was determined impassable shortly after reaching Dobbs Mill and terminated less than two miles from Bingham Springs near Rock Creek. So that kind of gives you an idea of how the road became a dead-end road. Virtually, they they were running the road and got to a point where it was just a sheer cliff, and they were hoping to go to Bingham Springs, and unfortunately, that's just where it ended. Since then, Pine Creek is used primarily for access by the private property owners in the area. Because the right-ofway does end in section six, dead-end road, this road is rarely used by others. The Public Works Department has maintained this section of road, but on a very limited basis over the years. And from what I understand, it might be once a year or so. You'd have to verify that with Tom. So, yeah, if you go ahead and scroll down just a little bit further, there's...
This is the petition, so yeah.
Yeah, we'll just keep on going to the report kind of down to the end here. I'll tell you then. So this is the first page. So keep on going to page four. Perfect. Thank you. So, yeah, back to the location. This kind of gives you an idea for those who aren't familiar with the location of the road, where it's at. So the top image just gives you a vicinity map with relating towns and things, and the next one down gives you a more specific view. The red is the portion that's proposed to be vacated, right there from the intersection of Narcus Lane East. And you also see that there's a road in blue called Road three-eighty-eight. That's that's an existing public right-ofway. I'll touch on that in a minute, but it's virtually an extension of Martin Ranch Road from two-oh-four. It doesn't physically exist through there, but the road right-ofway does. So I'll, and I'll mention that again in here in a bit. So if we could go to page five, please, next page. Thank you. And this is an overview of the petitioners, who signed, who didn't, just kind of an overall view of of what we're looking at. The petition was filed at the prescribed fee of five hundred dollars. The notices have been prepared, sent, and posted. Affidavits have noticed by service posting. Publication documents have all been completed. All certified mail receipts were received. All but one signed receipt of notice was received. Judy Whiteart, who's a representative of the Athena Civic Memorial Association, they're three and thirty-six A, tax lot eleven-hundred, so it's the next image down, or sorry, the next one up. That guy, yeah. So they're on tax lot eleven-hundred, right at the southeast quadrant of Narcus and Pine Creek. She informed me on November twenty-seventh that the address we used for her notice was incorrect. They did receive the notice and informed us of the correct address. We made that change. And we did not receive their receipt of notice. All of the others were received. So I just wanted to note that. In all, there's ten total parcels that directly abut this portion of Pine Creek Road. One parcel that does not directly abut the road but has equal interest via the access easement to Pine Creek Road, and that's on the next slide or the next image down, that's three and thirty-seven, thirty-five-hundred. You can see it's the funk property. They have an access easement to Pine Creek, which is their, there's no physical road there either, but that's their their legal point of access. So out of the ten abutting parcels totaling over twenty-four hundred acres, there are seven signatures and one additional agreeing to participation contingent on the reservation of an access easement over the existing road. So we can't vacate a road if it deprives a property owner of their legal access. And this particular parcel owner is thirty-four-hundred, which is Hancock Timberland. They are agreeing to participation contingent on this access easement. And they have written us a letter and all, we have that attached here, which we can read at the end of this presentation. So that just is kind of a brief overview of where that came from. And feel free to interrupt me and ask questions at any time. So this access easement would be required to preserve the property rights of all abutting owners and all owners who have legal access to Pine Creek Road be an easement. Assuming the access easement be granted, this makes eight total parcels in agreement, representing over ninety-five percent of the land. Eight out of the eleven owners signed the petition representing over seventy percent of the petitioners. So these all meet and exceed all the requirements per statute. It would also be recommended that if this this vacation were to, in fact, go through, that an easement, an easement dedication, they they would have the road surveyed before they they grant an easement because, as you can see, this in, I believe it was page five, the next slide up, it kind of shows those old roads in in the relation to, maybe it's the next one down, sorry. Yeah, keep going, one more. Yeah, there we go. Thank you. So you can see the as-traveled road is shown in green, and the dedicated roads vary slightly in some places. So to ensure that any future access easement conforms to the actual road location, be recommended that it get, be surveyed virtually, if that if that case were to to happen.
Matt, could you go to the next slide up?
Mm-hmm.
That one. You've got Road six-thirty-three that connects down to the other, the blue Mountain Lodge property.
Mm-hmm.
That, is that, you're not calling that Basket Mountain Road, are you?
No, that six-thirty-three, it's actually incorrectly placed on on the tax map here.
That's what I thought.
That road, that blue road that I, they had on that aerial exhibit that showed it going north, that was actually what is considered now Road three, six-thirty-three, which would be Martin Ranch Road, an extension thereof.
And when it hits two-oh-four, if you go across, then you hit Basket Mountain Road.
Correct.
Yeah.
So so there is no existing county road right-ofway where that shows that number six-thirty-three there. There is, that's all private land. But the actual, the the existing right-ofway runs between thirty-four-hundred and thirty-three-hundred approximately.
Okay.
And like I said, there's no road physically, but there is, there is a right-ofway there. And, you know, it could prove beneficial to public use at some point. I know right now that there's, you know, there's no anticipation of development, you know, in that area, but, you know, who's to say what could possibly happen in the future? So it's just something worth mentioning.
There are a couple of roads mentioned here that, other than the Pine Creek Road, that's Road six-thirty-three and Road three-eighty-eight. Are those the same?
So, yeah, six-thirty... So yeah, 633 is our new road number for our old road, 388.
Okay.
So it's, yeah, so at one point in time, the county had road numbers, and at some point in time, they, they renumbered all their roads, and so each road is associated with usually two different numbers.
So it depends on the map you look at.
Yeah. But we have, we have all that information recorded and can differentiate all that information, So yeah, although this portion of Pine Creek Road, as we mentioned, ends in Section 6, and this touches on that same thing we're just talking about, the existing undeveloped county road right-of-way, Martin Ranch Road, does intersect Pine Creek near its terminus and continues northerly to Highway 204. So, now, just again, to reiterate that. So if we can go again to page five, I'm going to, I'm going to touch on some addition, some comments that we received from the adjoining property owners throughout this area, some of which may be here and some may not, but I'm going to start with the utility companies. I talked to both Umatilla Electric and Century Link, who have utilities within the Pine Creek right-of-way for about half a mile. So from the intersection of Pine Creek and Narcus Lane, you run kind of northeasterly for about half a mile or so, and they serve that, I think it's the Brosher property, and I apologize if I'm saying that wrong, but that's where the utilities end, and so they don't, they do not continue along Pine Creek past that. But with the knowledge that there'd be an access and utility easement required for this, this particular case, they were happy with that and had no, no additional comments. I talked to the East Umatilla County Rural Fire Protection District, and they expressed their interest in this route remaining accessible and adequately maintained for emergency service purposes. East Umatilla County Ambulance Area Health District also had similar requests that they remain, that access remains through this route in case, in an emergency in the area. I had representatives for the Pearl Funk property, it's 3 and 37, 3,500, which I believe is on the, it's on the next, it's that parcel that's served by the, the access easement, 3,500, yep, that's perfect. They called me November 16th, and they expressed their disapproval for the vacation altogether. They would like it to remain a county road, and for the county to maintain the route at a more regular interval. And again, the, the one other phone call that I received was from Judy Weider, who was the representative of the Athena Civic Memorial Association, informing me of the incorrect address used. Her only other comment was that the road should remain open for access by emergency So other than that, we've had, we have a letter from the Planning Department that Bob Walder prepared, which I can, I can read now.
Matt, would you go to the next slide up again?
Yeah.
That one. On the Peterson property, the Athena Civic, right at that intersection, right there.
Yep, there's this.
If you go past that intersection, and on around the corner is that the intersection of Eagle Creek, and it takes you over to Bingham Road?
No, there is no throughway, I don't believe, and through to Bingham Road from this route.
Okay.
At least not that I'm aware of.
Okay. This is up farther then?
It is, it's awfully steep.
It's what?
Awfully steep.
Yes.
Yeah, because I believe this road kind of sits up above, above the ridge, and then there's a very definitive steep ridge that drops down into, to the Bingham Road down there. So back to the, the letter, this is a letter from Umatilla County Department of Land Use Planning, from Bob Walder, and I'm just going to read this real quick. This letter is in response to the proposed vacation of Pine Creek Road, County Road Number 688. Planning staff have reviewed the proposal. While we are not advocating for nor against the road vacation, we feel it is important to make interested parties aware of the implications that road vacation may have on properties in the vicinity of Pine Creek Road. Umatilla County zoning maps show parcels adjacent to the proposed road vacation are resource lands, zoned exclusive farm use, EFU, and grazing farm, GF. There is a wide spectrum of land use, uses that are allowed in the EFU and GF zones under the current Umatilla County Development Code. The proposed road vacation, which would do away with public access, may limit or preclude future land uses in the vicinity of the proposed road vacation. It appears at least six of the parcels in the vicinity of the proposed road vacation have the ability to be partitioned in the future if it was the desire of the landowner. The proposed road vacation may make future partitioning of the land challenging because of the difficulties in establishing legal access to additional parcels of land. And so that effectively ends, ends his letter, and that kind of goes hand-in-hand with the fact that we do have that existing, existing right-of-way. You know, it's, it's not obviously something that would be considered at any point in time soon, but it's just to be made to your, or bring it to your attention. So the only other letter that I'd like to, to mention was the Hancock Letter, which tax lot 3 and 37, 3,400, they were the folks that said they were in agreement contingent on, on the, the things listed in their letter, which I'll go ahead and read now. We would be in favor of the petition for vacation of a portion of Pine Creek Road Number 688, only with the following conditions being met before the actual vacation. Number one, our clients receive a non-exclusive permanent easement across the entire length of vacated road. Easement is not to be restrictive in its use. We will only sign an easement that could be used for multiple, multiple land use activities, including but not limited to forest management, utility development, and residential. Number two, we have no expense in the preparation of the easement document, other than providing the time to obtain our client's signature. Number three, if gates are to be erected, then we want the right to place our lock to assure access to the property. This needs to be known by all parties of the vacated road. If we cannot get these provisions and the easement agreement met, we want no part of the vacation. And that's Steve McClelland, he's the Real Estate Support Manager at a LaGrand office for Hancock. And so with that, that kind of is, is kind of the end of what I have as far as facts and findings. I think I skipped over it, but I'd like to, to discuss the issue as far as why the petitioners want the road vacated, and, and these are in no particular order of importance, this is just, just listed. The road ends at the bottom of tax lot 3 and 37, 3,300, it's a dead-end road. Road has not been maintained by the county, vandalism, camping in the middle of the road, and trespassing by non-property owners. So I just wanted to make sure and get that in there, because I think I skipped right over that. At this point in time, the Public Works Department makes no recommendation, rather we refer back to the Board to consider all, any and all testimony providing it, provided at this hearing.
Okay.
Questions? Just a question about the reference to, excuse me, the reference to lack of maintenance on the road.
Yes.
Is, is it not maintained, is it not taken care of by the?
To my knowledge, and again, this would have to be confirmed with, with others that may have a better knowledge of the maintenance end of, of the Public Works, but from what I've heard, it may be something that they do once, twice a year, but that would have to be confirmed from, from others. And you know, I'm sure some of the property owners could, if there's any here that represent, could speak to that effect, too.
Okay. Is there currently any logging going on up there?
Not that I'm aware of.
By Dodge?
Oh, yes, there is.
Okay. I don't know if that, if that's close to, they had a fire a number of years ago, there was some salvage they were trying to do, is any of that part of that logging at all? That's pretty old salvage by now, so, okay. Other questions? Okay, Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
This time, I'm going to open this up for public, for the public, for hearing. So again, if you want to testify on this, move up to the front, and when you do, come up to the mic, your name and address, and who you represent.
My name is Ron Stevenson, along with my wife Janet. We were the petitioners of this vacation. Two of the items that I wanted to bring up, the Peterson property and the Athena Civic, they were marked in yellow, and the reason they are, it's my fault, because they have property on both sides of the fence. They have absolute ingress and egress without having to do anything with a proposed gate right there at that junction. So I never even included them in the process. I'm under, I'm under this, been told that Petersons were, would support 100% of the direction they were headed into, but they have access without going through the gate. This morning, I received a, an email from Tom Reitman, who resides in Ione, and he is unable to be here today, and he asked that I read this short email, if that'd be all right. "We've been using Pine Creek Road since we bought Jason Land in 1982. The following are examples of problems we've had with the public during the seven years we rented the pasture from Richard Dodge. Repeatedly, the float bale and the water trough was shot or damaged by vandalism, allowing the pond water to escape to the point it'd be too low to flow to the end of the trough anymore. Fences were routinely cut. One incident was when someone ran off the muddy road near the east end and cut the fence to get out of the predicament. About 20 cattle escaped before we were aware of the breach, and it took the rest of the summer to find them, where a lucky one was injured by hitting one on the highway. It's hard on the roads to drive on them at the wrong time. If anyone would respect all the land, we'd be happy to share, but unfortunately, there are some bad apples, so that this is why we have to restrict access. It makes it better for those who ask permission. There is lots of public forest land with maintained roads nearby which can be patrolled and regulated. If Umatilla County wants to keep this as a public road, it needs to, it needs a lot of rock, culverts, routine grading, and patrolling for vandalism." I, too, have a lot of pictures, but there, they would be mute, it's, it's the same issue. The road is in, in just various tough conditions, and it's not anybody's fault, there's just probably not a very good base to it, and that you're, they're moving dirt, and that's about it, and that'll last till the next storm occurs. There may, there, there may be others, property owners, that would like to speak to this. We are basically concerned about the vandalism issue that we're running into. We had several hunters this year, especially, black powder season was really rough. Several people were asked to leave more than, more than once, and there's just a lot of trespassing and vandalism that's occurring that it needs to stop. We have vacated Narcus Lane, was done many years ago, we understand the rules, we have no complaints from anybody, any property owner up there, of how it's being done. Everybody has a key. One of our suggestions, with County Council approval, as a condition of vacation, we would like to suggest that the statement, the condition, all property owners that abut the vacated Pine Creek Road, or have recorded easement for their access, are to have permanent ingress/egress to their properties via this roadway. With that being a condition, it would solve everybody's concern of being able to get to their property for their individual usages that they may have. I'll let some of the other folks that might like to, unless somebody has a question?
Ron, a question, the intent then, if this road is vacated, would be to put a gate?
Put a gate, we'd put a double gate, allow for logging trucks, multiple locks, everybody has their own individual lock, which allows, Umatilla Electric has one, Telephone has a lock, they put on there. Everybody that has emergency vehicle has access with their own lock. Narcus Lane probably has eight or nine locks on it, and it serves four or five property owners.
Narcus has that now?
Yes. It's right at, the gate just got moved down because during winter, they, they had to walk up to the gate, unlock it, walk back to the car, get a run at the hillside, get to the top of the hill, walk back down to the gate, and so it got moved this summer. But we want to be right at the apex of our Narcus and Pine Creek.
Depending on weather, this time of the year on, has got to, to some extent, limits the traffic up there, I would think, but maybe not, when you've got four-wheelers that want to go up and...
The worst thing came around was when the four-wheelers came into being, so they come from everywhere. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name's Randy Brocker, address is 80318 South Cold Springs Road, Pendleton. Some of the reasons that we'd like to have this road closed, as some have touched on, one, it's all private, and it's a dead-end road, and at the end of the dead-end road, there's no turnaround. So they damage property when they go to turn around where the end of the road is. As Ron mentioned, gates are being left open, so I run cattle up there. This is our homestead from 1878, when my fifth-generation rancher up there still run cattle up there. I do rent pasture from Athena Civic Memorial. The Peterson property is cousins, second cousins of mine, and out in Narcus Lane, we rent other pasture. So we get equipment vandalism, and where that picture was, where the county maintains the road to, and where the dead end of Umatilla Electric and Century Link Phone is our property, and are, the dead end of that is at our cabin, and they do maintain up to that Green Gate, and have in the past. When the snow gets deep, we actually either use Dodges, or whoever's logging up there, they're dozers, or we take ours up there so we can get, get access during the winter. As Ron mentioned, four-wheelers, and then with the newfound high flotation tires, et cetera, people come in there, drive over our fences. I spend probably 50% of my time up there building and maintaining fence where people think they just have all the rights they can to drive over either with a snowpack, or in the springtime, just getting stuck and cutting through our fences. We've picked up, I don't, pick up loads of garbage up there, whether it's vacated tents, kegs of beer, you name it, and it's just a distraction for us getting things done. The road after what I'll call the Green Gate, or our cabin, is maintained for maybe, I don't know, another 400 yards, and then the second mile, it's not maintained, and I'm talking with Chad, and I believe there is a Dodge logging representative here. That road is impassable even at the best time, and I feel sorry for their maintenance program on their logging trucks, because it's a very difficult road. Some of the other reasons, fire safety, as I said, people start fires up there. One, I'm very proud of the fact of what all the landowners do up there, of maintaining the forest. I wish our government would look at that. It looks like a park, it's great multi-use for not only grazing, but if we have one strong wind and somebody gets careless with a match, we're going to lose all the work that we've worked so hard at. Poaching wildlife, we got a lot of people up there. Ron says trespassing, I found a couple of dead cow elk this year, appeared to be shot and not recovered, and by talking to the adjacent landowners, it was none of theirs, it was found on our property, I don't, cow elk hunt up there, so. Water is a big issue everywhere, that drains into both Wild Horse Creek and Pine Creek as the headwaters, and that when people get off-road, it dures up our ponds that we try to maintain for watering our livestock, that subsequently drains into Wild Horse Creek, and so we need to keep in mind that we're not only watering our livestock, but going down into the next tributaries. He did mention that County Road 388, prior to Dodge owning that property, we owned that, and that County Road 388 is nonexistent, and in a little book that I have, just on a side note of history, they thought the last time that road was used as a stagecoach road in 1898, so. Other than that, that's the reasons, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Would you go, Melinda, go back to that first slide. Randy, show me, or have Melinda show you about where your cabin would be?
Our cabin sits about the bottom of the H.
Okay.
And this right here, just where we're talking about putting the gate in, and we're going to put in a, already have purchased, or built, all the materials and the cattle guard to put underneath that gate. So when loggers are up there, we can run cows on both sides of the road, and they won't escape.
Is, is the road clear all the way through Dodge's property? Where's it dead-end?
Where's it dead end?
It dead ends on Dodge's property.
On Dodge's property?
Technically, the road, I believe, dead ends at the end of the Hancock property. Or just...
Might be in the Martin Ranch.
Yep. Where that, what is, so the next slide down, I believe, right there.
Right there.
Yep. So right there is the end, where it turns to dotted lines is the end of the road, and there's a gate there, so, but the gate and the road is less than the width of this room, and they can't turn around there.
Randy, you used to be able to go through there. What stops it now?
Three gates. So there's a gate on the north side.
Wire gates through there, going over toward...
Yeah, there's two, I guess for local terminology, it's the first cart, the first cattle guard, second cattle guard, third cattle guard, they all got gates across them, and then Meadow wood Speech Camp on the north end has a gate too, that they don't let anybody through on that end.
So those are lock gates. So there used to be some wire gates through there?
There's still wire gates with cattle guards underneath them, with lock, yeah, lock.
But they're locked.
Those were...
And cables through them.
On the slides too.
Yeah, well, they didn't used to be locked.
Okay, other questions? Okay, Randy, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ron Allred, I live at 57029 Narcus Lane. I work for Reitman's, I work for Dodge, and I help with Brockers when they're not there, and keep an eye on their place. And the, the two gates that are locked now, one is about 200 feet past the end of the road to make sure it is private road, and then at the third cattle guard, where it leaves Dodge's property, there is a lock gate there. I went to Yumato Electric, the Forest Service, and got locks from them, and put on those gates, so they have access through there. So the fire station should have Forest Service keys, so they have access through there. And the gates were put up over the, over the cattle guards, and then a new gate was put up at the end of the county road, like I said, about 100, 200 feet past, and those were both tore down. The Yumato Electric lock was shot off, Forest Service locks were shot off. Dodge's lock has not been shot off, but they shoot the other two off. So I continually go back and get locks from them and put on there, so make sure they have access through there. And then I keep an eye on everybody's property up there. A lot of vandalism, cows getting out, gates being left open. We had gates that were equipment gates next to the cattle guards, we had to take those out, because they would purposely go through those and take them down and leave them down so that the cows could get out that way. If they left the gate on the road down, they wouldn't get out because of the cattle guards. But they would intentionally leave those gates down, so we've had to take those gates out. We've had to put cables in on the wire gates to keep them from tearing them out. It's just a constant problem. There's kids that go up there having parties. We've had Sheriff's Department up there. When they will come up, is generally when they know who's doing it, and they have known the person, then they'll come up for whatever reason they need to. Other than that, they generally tell you, just kind of deal with it. They don't have the manpower to take care of it. But we've had bonfires up there in the summer, and the Sheriff's Department's had to come up and run them out. They had camps set up, we've had camps set up on Brockers, right off the edge of the road. If the fence moves away from the road, they think that's public property, and that's where they set up their camps and have their parties. I've had our gate at Narcus Lane left open. I left it open one night, I had people in my shop at 11:30 that night, and had the Sheriff's Department up there at 12:30. They were rambling through the shop. Plus, they got stuck and had to come me, have them pull them back out to the road. It was a young man, his wife and two kids, or his girlfriend and two kids, and they're stuck back there. After I got them out and unstuck them to the road, and I'm going back home, I decided to stop and look in my shop, and the guy had left beer cans where he was drinking beer in the shop, and had collected stuff out of the shop and set it right in front of the door to take with him. Fortunately for me, he got stuck and couldn't get away with that stuff. But it's just an ongoing problem. Brockers about, was it about five years ago, had a big party, New Year's Eve at their house. They weren't invited because they don't know who the people were. But there was, he had over 500 pictures on his trail camera, where people had gone in there, they had four-wheelers, side-by-side, snowbills, snowmobiles, and pickups, all at their house with a bonfire right outside the house. They didn't break into the house, but they had a big party. And cutting the fences, going through wherever they want to go, and the winter is just as bad as the summer, because you've got your four-wheeler, they call them wheelers, which are the big flotation tires, and they come up out of Walla Walla and milk free water, and like to go through there. As long as they stay on the road, it's not a problem, but they won't stay on the road, they get off the road. Then you've got three foot of snow, you've got four foot tall trees where you planted trees, and they bust the tops off of them, which now your trees are going to fork and not be worth as much money, and so you have problems there. It's just, in the, in the spring, it's the mud, they tear the roads up. That road itself, just about before you get to the end of Stevenson's on there, is so bad, I have a 99 Dodge four-wheel drive diesel, and if I'm not real careful, and stay out of the ruts, I get stuck and have to jack it up and move it off there. I live up there, and every year, they used to come through and plow from Brocker, they always plow up to Brocker's gate, and then they would plow the road out, not snow, but I said grade, they would grade the road from Brocker's gate all the way out to the end of Dodge's gate, because there's a good turnaround out there, so he would go clear out there and turn around and come back. But this spring will be three years that that road has not been graded in the spring. To Brocker's gate, they do grade usually two times a year. But past that, it has not been graded. If it doesn't get graded this spring, it will not have been graded in three years. You have to be careful even on four-wheel drive pickup, because you will get stuck on that road. I, if I slide off into the ruts, I'm stuck. And you've got to winch it out or jack it up and push it backwards.
Okay.
Is, anything else, is like that Martin Ranch road, you can access the road from the other side, but once you get there, there is no road. It's just overgrown completely, so.
I think that gives a pretty good idea of some of the issues.
And there is no access, once you go past Brocker's gate, there is no access on that road to go anywhere, except for on private property. You can't, it doesn't connect with any other road. The only one that would have, would have been that Martin Ranch road, but it doesn't now, so.
Okay. Anyone in favor of this? It's your turn to speak. I'm going to ask you to limit, because we're...
I'll be brief.
We still have 12 items.
I'm Tim Rogers, I represent Dodge Land and Blue Mountain Investments, part landowner in there. My address is 44112 Wreath Road. And just, just briefly, yeah, a lot of the information's been shared already, but probably the road maintenance issue is probably one of the biggest things there, that it has not been maintained, and, and we have done a lot of interior maintenance ourselves on that to, to help with our logging. But probably one of our biggest concerns with having this been open and, and not maintained is just the, it, the road is basically ruined up in through there, it's, it's non-passable. Every time we go in there to do some management work, we have to take and, and blade it and fix it and things ourselves anyway, so. And then the, the, one of the biggest concerns we have too is the fear of fire. It just seems like there's been a lot more, you know, vandalism and people traveling up there without any concern for the resource that's there. So that's probably our, our biggest issue, and we would really be in favor of limiting that, public use of that.
Okay. Quickly, anyone else in support of the vacation? Okay, now we switch gears, and we go to anyone opposed to the vacation. You want to speak against vacating this road? Any state agencies? Federal agencies? Okay, with that, I am going to close the public portion of this hearing. It is now closed, and we will deliberate. So, questions, comments from colleagues? George?
No. I, as I indicated before, I'm intimately familiar with that entire area, so, no questions.
I don't know how intimately I'm familiar with it, but very familiar, I don't think...
Careful about that intimate. Having traveled all of it.
There may be other intimate going on up there, you never know.
No, I was only looking at cows.
Okay, comments, Bill?
I regret closing public, public roads that the public would use for the enjoyment of nature and so on. I, I, it bothers me when we do that. But on the other hand, with rights to use a road, or rights to be anywhere, comes certain responsibilities, and it's been pointed out that some individuals have absolutely no respect for private property, and that's really unfortunate that they do, because they create the problem for everybody else who might use it for their enjoyment. We opened the area north of the highway to some, to, on county roads for access by four-wheelers last year, provided that they had their, their vehicles inspected and, and received a certificate from the Sheriff's Department. In all of that time, we had two individuals take, take part in that, which is indication that those who are up there are not very responsible. Another thing that concerns me, or I guess that I, that I have noted, is that there's no maintenance provided to the road now. And, and, in, in, in light of that, I see really no hesitation to close it.
I think when we did that four-wheeler movement, I think we specifically excluded this property.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, but...
Intentionally excluded.
My, my point was, there was an area opened up for legal access, and only two people in the entire county took advantage, or in the entire world, I guess, took advantage of that, and, so, which indicates that there's not a real willingness to be regulated.
Okay, it, it's a shame that we, we have issues where private property and, and land is, is destroyed, and property destroyed because of irresponsibility. Seems to be the way our society is turning anymore. I hate to say that, but Doug, do we have an order for this?
No, we do not.
At this point in time, and I would be in favor of vacating.
Also, as I indicate, I, I mean, I've witnessed what they do up there.
So sadly enough, I have witnessed some of the, both on that side of 204, and on the north side of 204 going into private land, and, and it's a shame. So with that, I would enter...
Are we looking for a motion? I would so.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we have the response to our petitions from our citizens of vacating that road. Be affirmative with that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
We have the pictures. If this is July, the gla, the grass looks awfully good.
Okay.
Well, it looks good.
We have a land use hearing for the three R valve application. So at this point in time, we did not have enough time to go through and take testimony for that. We are going to, I will open that, but continue it until January 16, 2018. Kent, I think that is your petition, I believe. Were you notified we were going to continue this?
My attorney was, and I wasn't.
You were.
My attorney notified me, but I didn't notice. And I'm here just to see some of the things that you get to myself. I did know that it was going to be continued before I arrived today. I would like to know, though, at what time on the 16th?
It's at 10 o'clock, I believe. 10 o'clock.
Yes.
It's a sole item, isn't it?
Yes, it will be.
Yes.
Nothing else on the agenda.
Right here in this room.
You will need a form of motion to continue.
So.
You will need a form of motion to continue.
Yeah, at that time... Chair, I would move that we continue the land use hearing for three R valve application to January 16, to 2018 at 10 o'clock, right here in this room.
Second. Been moved and seconded that we continue this application hearing for three R valve till January the 16th at 10 o'clock in room 130, Yumatoa County Courthouse. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Kent.
Point of privilege. Well, since we have a long agenda here, I'm curious if Bob and Sue have a specific item that we could elevate?
Rather than making it longer. I, I thought these were just...
I'm not supposed to make a presentation at all, but I'm glad to do that.
He, he was once a board member of mine, so I have to behave.
My name is Bob Keys, I live at 82478 Simon Point Lane in Hermiston. This is out on the river, Columbia River, and we're just west of Hat Rock. There's a community of seven houses up there on the river, and I'm petitioning to change this land property, it's, it will include 2,000 acres, and we want to change this from open range, excuse me, to a livestock district.
Is that item five?
Item, actually, it's six.
Six, okay.
And, excuse me, and then the reason we're proposing this is that every year, cattle come in just to the South Hollis, and graze there for two or three months, and then they are taken back out. So when this happens, each one of the landowners has to protect their property, mostly with electric fence, one or two strand electric fence, and most of the properties are two or three acres, so it's a little bit of work to put them up and take them down every two or three months every year. And so I guess I'm initiating this because I've had some property damage in the last two or three years to the tune of several thousand dollars. When the cows, excuse me, breached my property, I had a fence up, we were away, and so we came back, and they had torn up our yard, torn up a pool line on a fence, and so there's no insurance for this, when you have cattle coming on your property or like that. And also, I'm at the age, I'm a senior citizen now, and I just, I just turned 84, if you want to know, and so I, I really have a difficulty time doing this every year. And I did not bring the exact boundaries of the proposed livestock district. I don't know whether Mr. Olson has that or not, but maybe you, if you don't mind, we just describe a little bit. It's, it's four and a half sections there, and all along the river, but maybe you could be more specific. I don't know whether the board needs to have that information or not.
We do have some of that in front of us.
The board has seen a copy of the petition. But basically, the petition meets the requirements to form it, and so the first step that needs to be taken is to schedule a public hearing, and that one is, since it has to be 30 days out notice, it has to be scheduled for February 7th is the first available time. And so what was proposed is the adoption of order, BCC 2017-081, to schedule the public hearing and move the petition forward.
Okay. Any motion? Did you, did you have anything else you wanted to add to that?
I, I really did not, unless my wife... I really did not, unless my wife Sue would like to say anything. I guess she'll not. But anyway, thank you for your time, very much.
I know.
Thank you.
I know where it is.
Well, yeah, we all do.
I think it's been a concern for a great long time.
So...
I remember talking with Bob a long time ago about that. Yes.
What I do need, however, is a motion.
I made that motion. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded that we move forward with the livestock district petition, and the order is BCC 2017-081, to set a hearing date for November, or, no, February 7, 2018. All those at 10:00 or 9:00?
It'll be at 9:00, the regular board meeting.
Okay, 9:00 at our regular board meeting here in Room 130. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay.
We're eliminating our audience.
Yeah, that's true. Snowplow purchase. Bob? Snowplow purchase?
Yes.
Now, this is for, this is for three of them, right?
No, this is for a used auto car from the state.
I thought maybe we could get a couple more for that price.
We tried a couple of years ago at an auction, and we missed them. Baker County got away with them. But this is an auto car. It's probably a 50,000-pound truck. It's got a sander in it, it's got a big 11-foot plow on the front, and it's also got a wing plow, which we can put one guy in that and open up a road one pass. We've got one of these already, and it's a fantastic tool for snow removal. It's a four-wheel drive. It's got 1,400 by 24 tires on it, big tires, and they go pretty much anywhere, and it really does a good job for us.
Especially for $8,500.
Exactly. You have to add some more, we would jump on it.
I thought we talked about that, there was more.
There was, that we weren't able to get them.
We weren't able to get them.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, we missed a couple, a couple of years ago, so...
I know the chair doesn't usually make, do the motions, but I will move that we approve this purchase.
Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. My vehicle doesn't get repaired. I may have to use that.
Yeah, I'll probably be going and getting that later today for you, till they get the tools to fix it.
We're not going to trust you. We're not going to trust you with anything valuable.
All right. Thanks, Bob. Position for the DD program?
Kim Weisenflue, Program Manager for Yumitala County Community Developmental Disabilities I'm before you to propose two positions for the C2DP program. The first position being a Service Coordinator-Supervisor position, and the second position basically re-establishing a Program Specialist position. To remind you, two, three, maybe, I don't know, I don't have any track of time, but at some point in this last six months, I've been before you, and we actually eliminated the two Program Specialist positions and made them Service Coordinators, so they could be more flexible. What we've determined with our state funding, our carryover funding, that it would be more efficient and effective if we had one of those Program Specialist positions reopened. So, that's why I'm making that proposal. The Service Coordinator-Supervisor position, frankly, with no office manager, and myself being the only management within the C2DP, and having eight Service Coordinators, I'm not able to do the job that needs to be done with them, so I'm asking for a supervisor for the Service Coordinators.
Okay. Have you discussed this with your liaison commissioner?
Just a little.
I was going to use the term ad nauseam, but that's...
I was like, he's probably not going to let me in his office again.
Okay, I would entertain...
The budget, the budget impact, as I understand it, is zero. It's funded, grant-funded position.
I'll second that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Dan, the addition voter machine?
Is this one made in Russia? I said, is this one made in Russia?
Ballot counting.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dan Laney, Director of Administrative Services. The mic's a lot louder than it has in the past, has been in the past, so... The election department bought, I went ahead and looked back at our fixed assets and found that we bought our current election scanner that counts all of our ballots. We have two of them. We bought it in 2007, November 2007, and then we bought another one the same age, used from Harney County. So, we have, when they moved to the newer style of ballot readers, we bought their older one for about $5,000 a couple of years ago, which is the same age as our one that was bought in 2007. So, it's 10 years old. We have been looking at a way of replacing those two ballot machines, and we could purchase a newer one for between $40,000 and $50,000, a smaller one, but we still need two, one is a backup, and when we get busy in the big election, presidential elections, we can run both of them at the same time. We would, our plan was originally to buy another one in the next budget cycle, but that would be a cost of $80,000 to $100,000. Lane County just recently replaced their ballot machines with a newer system. They're only a couple of years old. At the time when they bought these, the, had the machine, there wasn't software formed to do what's called online adjudication, where you can actually view the ballot on the computer screen, and then if it's, the system would say, hey, this ballot looks like there might be an issue with it. You need to check because we think you voted for two people or something, and we would look at that. Our current ballot, or their machine at the time, didn't have the software that automatically goes through that. So, they went and bought a new system, but since, while they were purchasing that, the software is now available to run on those ballot machines that they have, and they have them, but they already have a new system. So, they're willing to sell us those two devices. They're larger devices than what we were looking at buying, for $25,000 for both of them. They retail, when they bought them a couple of years ago, for $98,000 each. So, and basically, we would be paying $12,500 for each of them, $25,000 for both. They're only a few years old. Our current one is 10 years old. It's an opportunity that doesn't come along too often to purchase those, so that's why I'm here before you today, that I want to move forwards with this, so we can replace our older ones with these newer ones and put ourselves in the position to later maybe do the online adjudication to save time with my staff. The current ones we have are not compatible with that. They only scan, they only have little lights that look for the little ovals. These actually scan the whole ballot in and take an image and save that image of the ballot, so they digitize the ballots at the same time that they're counting. Our archiving fund, records archiving fund, has a little over $50,000 in it. It's Program 3513. I'd like to use $25,000 out of that archiving fund to purchase this. Currently, our election department did not have a November election, so we saved about $40,000 because of that. Though the state has, we have a statewide election going on right now, a special election that the state will reimburse us for, so we should be receiving a reimbursement of $40,000 for the current election effort running. In a sense, we only plan for two elections a year. We're only having one, but we have this extra. I'm going to end up with $40,000 extra at the end of the year in the election department that should cover this, too. And the plan would be to reimburse the archiving fund, that $25,000, at the end of the year.
Dan, a question. With these two new, two new machines, how far out into the future would you anticipate this would take us with being able to use it before they'd have to be, excuse me, before they'd have to be replaced, or the system might be changed?
Well, our current system, we have, we've run, we have run them for 10 years. These are a couple of years into it. They're the newest, they're the current ones on the market. I would assume that we should be able to do, use these for about seven years, would be my anticipation. But like most things, we run longer than that, so we could probably at least get, you know, some time. But I anticipate seven years. But still, right now, since ours are at the point, I would have to buy something, and it's going to cost us close to $100,000 to get where we currently are to replace those within the next few years. So, I'd rather spend $25,000 now and have that for five, seven years, seven years, instead of in a couple of years have to turn around and pay $100,000, and then five, seven years have to replace that.
Dan and I and Robert met earlier this morning and talked about the long-term implications, as well as making sure that we had sufficient funds to do it and made economic sense. And one of the things we revisited was the fact that several times recently, we've been able to be nimble enough to take advantage of finding, I don't say bargains, but equipment that serves our needs, that's cost considerably less than it might otherwise cost, and it's been, been good to be able to take advantage of that.
I think your comment of a bargain is well said.
That's probably said, yeah. We, well, the truck, we budgeted $35,000 for a dump truck and got one for six on surplus.
So, that's how we save money and keep our budget within our means.
That's going to save us quite a bit of money, so I'd move to approve the purchase.
Second. Been moved and seconded to approve this purchase. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, the Echo Community Benefit Plan, Doug?
I believe Commissioner Alfrin probably...
I serve on the committee and meet with the, as a part of that committee in Echo, and they just met a couple of weeks ago, and allocated, through, after discussion, an amount of $8,000 to rehabilitate the Fort Henrietta Park Blockhouse, and $17,000 to rehabilitate the VFW Hall. And both of those received considerable discussion. It's not just a blanket stamp that goes on approving everything that comes before them. So, Mr. Chair, I would move approval of Order BCC 2017-080.
Second. Been moved and seconded, we approve the Echo Benefit, Community Benefit Plan recommendations. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Has there been any discussion, there's an old church...
In Echo?
In Echo.
It has come before the board, oh, maybe two years ago, and it wasn't in, the board was not in a position to really be able to help it that much, but it's been taken on now as a community effort with the city and the, I believe it's the Lyons or the Kiwanis in Echo, and they're moving ahead on that. They had an open house there not too long ago, which was nice for everybody to be able to go through it, and they served, had some refreshments and so on.
Could be a huge tourist in historical...
Absolutely. And it's being worked on to get it into that shape. It's, and it's not really in good shape right now. There's quite a bit of work that would need to be done, primarily the exterior of it, but it's, yeah, there's a lot of interest in moving that along.
Good. All right. Our board meeting schedule, because of our commitments, we have all received a copy of this. Any questions on that? Doug, do you have any?
Basically, there are two board meetings that have, do not have a quorum within the next few months. March 7th, due to the NACO conference, and the proposal is just to move it back a day to November 8th on a Thursday, and then also on April 18th, because of the Budget Committee, that is not available, so the proposal is to move it up one day to April 17th.
Okay. Questions?
Move approval.
Second. Been moved and seconded for approving the new schedule for our 2018 board meeting agendas. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, and then our Wildlife Services contract. Doug, do you have that?
Yes, I'm in, the information. Yeah, there is a pinky on it. Basically, the request is coming from the USDA AFIS for a contribution for its aerial operations. They periodically approach their supporters for additional contribution when their funding run lows, run lows for their program. This happened, I think, last time in 2013, and the county contributed $10,000. The agency is back again for another request, this time for $7,500 for their aerial operations.
Okay, comments?
Just a question. Do we know what the extent of their service is, what, how often they are out there and what they do? How many coyotes are shot, or?
It's based on knee, on complaints. Dave Williams was supposed to visit with us at AOC. I talked to him just briefly, but we were interrupted, and then I believe he came in and visited with you.
I visited with him at, at some length at AOC, but he also came to the office.
Yes.
Here, and I visited with him when he was here. It also has to do with availability. They have to, they just don't have the pilots of the planes standing by. And I think it was put on hold for a while because they had an accident several years ago, but it's back, back in operation, and it's an extremely popular service locally.
They, I do know, they try and coordinate if they're doing something in a neighboring area, Moro County, or they try and get those areas consolidated, so it takes less fuel if they're doing one area at a time.
It's strongly embraced by the Cattlemen's Association, I can tell you that.
Yes. It always has been.
I know.
So, with that, I didn't approve the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, the Hospital Facility Authority appointments?
It's Jim Setzer and...
Tom Wamsley.
Tom Wamsley, and I would move we make those appointments.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded to appoint those. Is, Jim's new on it, is he not?
Yeah, he was, he was at this year's meeting.
He has, was appointed...
Filled out somebody's position.
Filled out the last term about a year or so ago, and so now he's being reappointed, being requested to reappoint for a full term.
And Tom has been on there for a while.
He's in his second term.
Yeah. And you're in your first?
Second.
Second term.
I think so.
Okay.
Very demanding position.
All right, we do have a motion to second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, the Local Public Safety Coordinating Council appointments? That's your liaison, Bill?
It is, and what's occurring here is an update to bring some of the people from the county that should be on that, on that committee, and reappointment, I think, of another at-large position. But to appoint Juvenile Department Director Digna Moreno, Health Director James Sitzer, Mental Health Director Michaela Cathy, Yumitala County Human Services Amy Ashton-Williams, and at-large Travis Ainan from Hermiston Police Department. And I would move approval of Order BCC 2017-083, appointing them.
Second. Been moved and seconded for the... Been moved and seconded for the Public Safety Coordinating Council Appointments. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. I would add that I was approached, the coordinator for those councils had been.
Shelley Enen.
Shelley Enen, and I was approached by an individual that would like to apply. Is that public knowledge?
The, that has been advertised for that position, so if you, I can provide the information to the person if you want me to.
It was Mark.
You may, you want to tell me later?
What?
From LaGranne?
No, 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 from Rolling Stone Bakery, Mark.
Oh, yeah, Royal.
Yeah, Mark Royal.
I'll, I'll get the information too.
Okay, I, I think they, I don't know, he said they were thinking about selling their bakery.
That's what I heard, unfortunately. It was a good source of bread.
Yeah, so anyway.
Yeah, we, this is HR, we probably better let them know too, but if you.
Move on.
Pardon?
We probably better move on from that.
If you would.
Yeah.
Okay. Supplemental budgets. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open the hearing for our supplemental budgets at this time and ask for our staff report.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Paul, CFO, Umatilla County. This morning, there are several supplemental budgets before you. They appeared in the December 12th, were published in the December 12th issue of the East Oregon Union. I'll read you a summary and here you go. Budget Order 2018-12, the Courthouse Facility Improvement Fund. Courthouse Facility Improvements Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in capital outlay of $180,000 and a decrease in contingency of $180,000. Budget Order 2018-13, Milton Free Water Facility Improvements, requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $75,890, an increase in capital outlay of $27,110, and it also requires a decrease in contingency of $103,000. Budget Order 2018-14, Fair Improvement. The Fair Improvement Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of $28,800 and a decrease in contingency of $28,800. Budget Order 2018-15, Public Works Fund. Public Works Fund Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in state revenues of $500,000, an increase in materials and services of $150,000 and an increase in contingency of $350,000. Budget Order 2018-16, Wellness Hubs. The Wellness Hubs Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires increases in state revenues of $95,500, increase in personnel services of $36,250 and an increase in materials and services of $59,250. Budget Order 2018-17, General Fund Bureau of Recreation Contract for the Water Master. The BOR Contract Water Master Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services $700 and a decrease in contingency of $700. And Budget Order 2018-18, General Fund Water Master. The Water Master Program requires a supplemental budget to appropriate funding not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenues of $1,600, an increase in state revenues of $100, an increase in materials and services of $500 and an increase in contingency of $1,200. You have any questions?
Okay, Robert, thank you, yeah. On three of those, the first one, 14, is that, and that's a fair, does that have to do with the, in, the increase due to those covers?
Uh, no, that's not related to that. Those other expenditures that were made from that fund, when we adopted the budget, we weren't sure what items would be charged to that and so didn't allow enough money in that fund in materials and services to cover the cost of items that were expended to make the fair operational from its transition.
Okay. Were there any of those we could have taken out of the Fair Moving Fund?
Uh, well, actually, the Fair Improvement Fund used to be the Fair Moving Fund. So that's where all that funding is.
Okay.
Question on, go ahead.
Then on the BOR Contract for the Water Master, was that due to changing over and the state has now taken that over, is my understanding?
Yes, it is officially done.
Okay, so.
So at the end of the fiscal year, there were some straggling items that carried over into this fiscal year. We did not budget anything for either the BOR Contract or the Water Master Program and there were, there were a few items that slid into this fiscal year, we just have to make a budgetary adjustment for those.
Okay, and the, the last one was the Water Master. I thought we had budgeted $100,000 for that change over of staff. What happened with, with that?
Um, the $100,000 that was budgeted for the Water Master is actually not in those funds, it's actually in the General County Program as a contribution to the Water Master. And we have more or less expended a portion of that for the transfer of those employees and there is a, there's a balance, we budgeted $100,000 for that and there's a balance that remains owing for the rest of the fiscal year.
Okay, and that was the $1,200?
No.
No, this is, the, the budget, the budget adjustment here is not related to that $100,000 at all. It's, like I said, it's expenditures and actually some revenues that, that accrued in 2017 but weren't actually realized until 2018, so we have to make provision in the budget for those.
Okay.
But they're not related to the $100,000.
Okay.
And it is a positive, a positive impact, is that?
Yeah.
We had more, more revenues come in on the revenue side and, and just the requirements.
Yeah, there, there's a slight difference between revenues and expenses and revenues did, are ahead of that right now.
Any other questions? All right, I'm ready for motions to.
Public input.
Oh, that's right, with this, a public hearing. You're the only public left, Kent, any comments?
Comment I got is, your guys' mission statement at the bottom of the page is, I mean, when I look at your, it's no cloud five cents on the dollar. About what you're, about the BOSA on the dollar. That's pretty impressive. You know, I haven't been here a while and I, I'm encouraged, that's what I heard today as opposed to what, actually, I kind of thought that I would hear today, so it was, it was good to see, see you being conservative with our tax dollars.
Thank you.
I'll see you on the 16th.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kent.
So have we closed?
Okay, so I will close the public hearing and we will deliberate.
Since all of those are in the presence of Commissioner Alfredine, I'll make all the seconds when he makes the motion.
Okay.
Chair, move approval of Budget Order 201-8-12.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Move approval of Budget Order 201-8-13.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Move approval of Budget Order 201-8-14.
Second.
All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Move approval of Budget Order 201-8-15.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Move approval of Budget Order 201-8-16.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Move approval of Budget Order 201-8-17.
Second.
All those in, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Move approval of Budget Order 201-8-18.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, Robert, thank you.
That's awfully late in the meeting to start expediting it.
Well, those public hearings people need to be able to have their say.
Bob knew, he said, stood up and said, yes, I said, I'd like to report.
Okay, do we have an executive session that we need to go into?
I believe so.
Okay, at this point in time of our meeting, we'll go to Commissioners' Reports. And we have an hour before lunch, so you take all the time you would like.
No, I just want a question, a question. When is our next staff meeting? Because we had a couple of topics we, I was proposing we discuss and I was advising my, my colleagues to postpone it until the next administrative meeting, so I just want to make sure.
Administrative or staff meeting?
Staff meeting.
It's January 2nd.
Okay. And I don't know how long it'll take, but, well, I have one item you know about and one you don't know about, so I just want to make sure we have time that day.
Okay.
A second.
So the second, we will have those, those items brought forward.
That was the sum and substance of my report.
Okay.
I can report that I sat in on the telephone conference with the Eastern Oregon Association of Counties, which as you might know, went ad nauseam on the forest management plan and grazing rights and all the things that you suggested it might be about. It did not involve a discussion of dues. I would suggest, and I left the call, Jay Sullivan was there and made his report and I left the call not too long after that, there was nothing else coming on the agenda that I, looked like it was of high interest. I would like to suggest that we put together a letter to the East Oregon Association of Counties outlining our concerns as a board with the dues that we pay and, and how, how they are spent and make that available to the, to the Eastern Oregon Association of Counties.
Okay, well, let me share a letter I received last night. This is a letter from Jim Pena, the Regional Forester. We have worked and we have worked to try and have the Blue Mountain Forest Plan address the needs of the communities, all the counties that are involved in the Blue Mountain Forest, being Umatilla, Willow, Whitman and now here. I demanded that they have the regulatory agencies involved, being the NIMS and US Fisheries. So they did that. With that being said, they came up with the idea of, okay, we'll look at your concerns. Basically, the concerns that were brought forward were the disagreements voiced by Willow County for grazing and forest, same concern with Harney County, mostly grazing and access, same concern from Union and Baker County, Union's mostly on timber harvest. So this is a copy that was sent to me, a letter sent by Jim Pena the end of November, November the 30th, just prior to Mark Owen from Harney County and Todd Nash from Willow County going back, and I, I talked about this on the radio yesterday, going back to DC due to a lack of trust of the Forest Service in presenting the concerns of those counties. And it was on grazing and timber. They went back and met, but this was sent just prior to those two going back when Jim Pena presented that plan or what he thought would get support to Tony Tuck, the new Forest Chief appointed by Ryan Zinke, the new Department of Interior Secretary that was Trump's appointer, appointee. Says, "Thank you for coordinating with members of the Eastern Oregon County Association in preparation for our meeting that occurred in Pendleton on October 16th. Also, thank you for helping us to follow up with counties after that meeting in a timely, productive manner." During our meeting in Pendleton County, Commissioners presented their remaining concerns with the Blue Mountain Forest Plan, which incidentally was mostly Willow, Union, Baker and Harney Counties. Strangely enough, Grant County didn't offer much. The topics of concern were grazing, pace and scale of restoration, public access, management areas, land allocation and timber sales and stewardship contracting. Since we scheduled a separate meeting the 31st of October to address counties' concerns about grazing, this letter focuses on the counties, other presentation topics from October 16th. During the 16th meeting, the counties asked several other questions that required future follow-up. Please see the enclosure for the Forest Service responses to both the presentation topics and the follow-up questions. And those were, were concerns that were granted as far as trying to address, those were questions with US Forest Service and other concerns related to having those agencies present, and I use the term, speaking with them eye to eye and having them at the table. The next step, and I'll comment on this part of it here, the next step in the forest plan revision process is the ESA consultation. The Forest Service has proposed adjustments to repair in grazing guidelines. That would be stubble height, it doesn't say that here, it uses the term GM3G. In the addendum to our biological assessment, we have submitted that addendum to the US Fish and Wildlife Service. They were there at the table, they heard that being commented, but they required the Forest Service to make an addendum to the plan and present that to them. Also, the National Marine Fisheries, NIMS for short. I expect that formal ESA consultation will begin shortly. At the conclusion of the ESA consultation process in 2018, we expect to publish the draft record of decision along with the final EIS and revised forest plans. Publishing these documents will initiate the objection process, which will provide counties with additional opportunity to express their remaining concerns and to work with the Forest Service to address those concerns. We will provide further information and instructions before the objection process begins. And he goes on to say, "I appreciate your continued engagement in the Blue Mountain Forest Plan process." Mark Owen and Todd Nash didn't accomplish a damn thing by going back to DC. I hate to be that blunt because this process was already set in, basically set in stone. So what the ESA consultation is and the EIS consultation won't, I don't expect to change much of anything with US Fish or NIMS. With that being said, my concern is we've got a group of counties that are saying we want more grazing. want more grazing, we want less conditions on stubble height, we don't want the riparian area increased, those were the concerns they voiced to US Fish and NIMS and Forest Service. And the Forest Service is still the middleman in all this process. For us to be involved in the Eastern Oregon Counties Association and paying.
Sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand dollars or thereabouts, I'm not sure we're gaining a great deal from our money we're putting in. I hate to leave those folks high and dry. But our concerns have been water issues out of the Columbia River. The process of continuing with the pilt payment is number one for us and waters of the US, which will affect Umatilla County greatly. Those are the things we're lobbying for through NACO, which I sit on that board now. And also, to some degree, AOC, all three of us are board members on AOC.
What's that branch? There's, there's three parts to the leg, Eastern Oregon Counties, ONC, and there's a third.
Forest Trust.
Forest Trust.
And the individual Mason Gerard and I forget the third company name, but they're represented by, and their lobbyists that Eastern Oregon Counties and all three of those, Forest Trust and ONC Counties are paying is Jay Sullivan. Jay Sullivan is charging approximately, and, and we've talked about this before, about sixty thousand dollars to each of these individual groups. And our dues go into AOC, part of our dues are for the Forest Trust. We don't pay into ONC Counties because we're not an ONC County. But Jay is, is basically lobbying on behalf of all three of those groups for the same The SRS payments, the Secure Rural Schools, we only end up out of that with approximately seventy thousand a year, Robert?
Yeah, it's been decreasing, but yeah, seventy to eighty thousand, I think, in the last couple of payments.
Which we chose years ago to take a full pilt payment rather than have it, and, and we got more money by doing that.
I believe so.
Which I, I still, when we have to make the, the election, I'm not sure we have to make that each year, once we've done it, it's done, I believe.
Um, I'm not sure that there's an opportunity to change.
But the result is, we get more from the, being full pilt. The last word I received from NACO and WIR was that pilt and SRS were not reauthorized. NACO is still, we're still fighting to have that put back in the budget. This is part of the new tax proposal and part of the new budget process. I think we get more out of, of working with NACO and AOC individually than we do being a part of this, each one of these. That's simply my, from what I've been involved with and what I've had opportunities to discuss and see happening, that's my opinion.
Has pilt been cut out of the proposed budget? Or, I mean, it's really hard to read an awful lot in the proposed budget because it gets so dug on deep in there.
That's the other issue. It has not been, every year it has to be reauthorized.
Yes.
It's not an automatic in the budget. So at this point in time, no, they have not reauthorized it. They're, they're looking at offsets, they're looking at ways to pay for the proposed tax cuts, which will end up being severe to counties. Now there's a backdoor, when you look at natural resource issues, environmental issues, there is a backdoor to push through the original waters of the US or WOTUS. We talked about that while I was in Fort Worth, we're trying to fight that on all fronts. It will have some devastating effects on especially rural western counties. There's a number of eastern counties in the state of Virginia and Florida that it could be beneficial to and possibly the state of, of New Hampshire and Vermont because of, of water issues there. King County, Washington, basically Seattle, they've had to take steps over the years where with the federal government taking total control, this might help them also. But again, that's not a rural county as such.
What's the position of the Western Interstate Region on these issues? Are they, do, do they carry on any lobbying at all?
Through.
Through NACO.
Through NACO. And of course, they're opposed to the waters of the US as, as we have been. And NACO is also, that's, they're fighting against that. The majority of three thousand seventy counties are opposed to some of these regulations because of the cost and the onus that it puts on county governments. So with that, I, I think on the Eastern Oregon Counties, we have about five counties driving the bus that isn't completely helpful to us. So I'll let you two weigh in, I'm done.
Well, I was hoping you'd be passionate about this.
What do you mean, be?
You are passionate about it.
Well, I, you know, if it's not helping us, and I don't see it helping Umatilla County.
Well, that's one of several, I've, actually, that's one of several issues where I think there's a group of counties driving the bus and because we have the bulk of the population, we have the money.
And we're paying the bill.
I know, I know.
So.
I'm getting kind of annoyed by it. I spoke to the workforce thing the other day. And there's others, they, where we pay, we pay the bill and they don't advance our agenda.
That's exactly right.
There was a lot of backslapping and handshaking going on with Mark and Todd's trip to Washington, DC, and everybody thought they'd really accomplished a great deal.
Well, they did. They went back and their faces were, were seen and they.
Yep.
They were able to say, we're representing Harney and, and Willow Counties because the, Willow, those two counties especially were very upset with what US Fish changed in the forest plan and sent back and said, we can't accept that, but we'll accept this. Well.
They thought they had achieved some, some compromise on the, the height of the, of the grazing grass and so on when they went back.
The big thing was the grazing stubble.
Yep.
And the riparian area and having, what they may get out of this is for the Forest Service to say, we will look not at an entire unit, but at certain allotments.
That's a big one.
And that is a big one.
Yeah.
It, it does bring some fairness to those producers that abuse their grazing allotments. But I will venture to say this. If the trial of the Bundys over their federal stand on their grazing allotments in Nevada, if that gets thrown out and they found that the federal government overstepped their reach, then we may see some changes in the way grazing allotments are done. And it could be that the Forest Service and the BLM say, we're not going to do grazing allotments the way we have in the past. We will limit it to a, a great extent. And, and remember, it's not just cattle producers and, and timber interest. We also now have a whole myriad of other folks saying, wait a minute, these lands belong to us also. And they're starting to get legal standing in a lot of these cases, so.
It was, however, interesting during a portion of the ODFW hearing that I went to, where the, the chair, who has a lot of history with these issues, said that we are considering wolves, for example, and some of these other issues as a single, as a single matter covering both public lands and private lands. And that we need to separate those considerations out because we're making decisions that encroach on the rights of those who have private lands. In that case, for example, the state of Oregon owns the wolves and the wolves are doing damage on private lands and the state isn't providing adequate protections.
That's exactly right.
And, and we've been told that, but the state doesn't seem to want to address that.
And part of that is because of the strong representation of Oregon Wild, Sierra Club, High Desert, Oregon High Desert, I forget the other name, Environmental Group there.
Natural Desert.
Yeah, Oregon Natural Desert Association.
No, the Diversified Wildlife, Wildlife or something like that.
The Wildlife Federation, Snake River, geez, I can't name all of those. There's about five different environmental groups that are having and getting money to have more influence on those wildlife plants.
I know, but the hunters are weighing in and all I'm saying is that those groups don't have nearly the standing in regard to private lands that they do with public lands.
Right.
When they say, everybody owns the public lands, that's fine, but they can't make the same claim on the private lands.
No. And it, it's getting though, so a lot of the state agencies that are controlled by state administration.
Just as another aside, Mark Owen said, called me before the last AOC meeting about his intention and desire to be named the at-large Eastern Oregon Representative on the Oregon State Water Commission, which I would support him from the standpoint, he's very thoughtful, he's experienced with irrigation, and he's very articulate. But it was brought before the Natural Resources Committee and it was pointed out that they thought there were some other commissioners that were wanting to run, so it was not dealt with.
To, to run.
To be appointed, rather.
To the Oregon Water.
Water Commission as the Eastern Oregon at-large representative.
Two other things are weighing on my mind. One is I have a conference call at noon and two, Carol Johnson made us a plate of homemade fudge, which we haven't yet visited.
And to that, George, I'll cede my part of that to you.
Well, that was, that was the issue I.
I would suggest that our chair communicate with the Eastern Oregon Counties Association, indicating the fact that we are revisiting our membership status.
Okay. I can certainly do that, although I missed the conference call. You were on that, so, did they talk about membership or did, or dues?
Nope, wasn't on the agenda.
Again, what was the bulk, Bill?
The bulk of the meeting was about the trip to Washington, DC and its results.
How about Steve's thing about the smoke in the valley?
Uh, I think they were, I did, I didn't stay in for that. I had another, another one to go to and that, it was primarily on, on the trip to Washington was the primary.
Did they feel like they had accomplished?
Yeah, they thought they had mission accomplished as far as what they went back there to do.
And yet.
Sullivan felt it was a, a good opportunity, he was on the call too.
Again, when they get the re, the, the draft plan back of this ESA and, and EIS.
You'll be able to know by then what, what, if any, impact was, was felt.
Yeah, yep.
So, I think, I think "There Shall Be Smoke in the Valley" is an old country song, isn't it? To that nature.
I don't know.
Okay. Anything?
That was something primarily, I think, out of Deschutes County, wasn't it? The smoke.
Well, but somebody said Steve was, Larry, I think, told me Steve McCord was going to chat about that one on the agenda.
Yeah, they were concerned about forest fires. We're all concerned about forest fires, but.
What do you do with the smoke? I mean, you gotta have the smoke, if it's gonna burn, you gotta have smoke.
Yeah.
I mean, they just keep it from getting burned.
So, okay, with that being said, any other comments?
No.
So to placate our senior commissioner.
Wait a minute, I'm junior.
So he can get to his phone conference, we are adjourned.